Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the regular session of American Council of the Town of Berlin. It's Monday, February 13th, 2023, and it's 7:07, so we're a few minutes behind. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pleasure of the leaders. Thank you. Our pleasure, leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is, before we move into that, can I get a consensus from the group, given our audience that we have this evening, can we move Agenda Item 4B, which is Motion 2023-04 to enroll in the law enforcement officer's pension system, to Agenda Item Number 2? All right, there's consensus on that, so we'll move that up right after the approval of the minutes. So the approval of the minutes, Agenda Item 1A, is the executive session of January 23rd, 2023.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Mer.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the executive session of January 23rd, 2023 passed unanimously, and all the council members are present. Up next is Agenda Item 1B, which is the statement of closure for the executive session of January 23rd, 2023. The time of the closed session was January 23rd, 2023. That's a typo. At approximately 9:15 PM, immediately following the regular session. The place or location of the closed session, the vote was, to go into closed session, was held in the council chambers and live on Facebook. The meeting then went over to the conference room for the discussion. The purpose of the closed session was a discussion regarding the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS agreements. The date and time that we return back to the public meeting is today's date at 7:00 PM. The record of the vote, the motion was made by Councilmember Mer. The second was done by Councilmember Burrell. Members voting in favor were Councilmember Green. Members in opposition was Councilmember Oris, and the members absent were Councilmember Nichols. The statutory authority for the closed session, the meeting was closed under the following provisions of the general provisions of Article 3-305B, Item Number 14, where a contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy for the contents of the bid or proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. It was also amended to include Item Number 7, which was to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Item Number, or Number 4 is the actual discussion items, and that was the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS agreements. All right, that concludes the statement of closure, Agenda Item 1B. Up next is Agenda Item 1C, which is the approval of the January 23rd, 2023 regular session minutes.
Motion approved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris.
Sir.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the regular session minutes of January 23rd, 2023 passed unanimously. Up next on our amended agenda is the Motion 2023-04 to enroll in the law enforcement officer's pension system, LEOPS. I'm on here as running point, as well as our Chief of Police Arnold Downing and our Human Resources Director, Kelsey Jensen. And if you get over to the motion itself, it says, "Motion of the American Council of the Town of Berlin to enroll in the law enforcement officer's pension system, LEOPS, for the Town of Berlin, municipal law enforcement officers actively employed beginning July 1st, 2023, and hired thereafter. The American Council recognizes the unique career challenges of our law enforcement officers and understand that adding a LEOPS benefit to our law enforcement officers will have a positive impact on public safety within the Town of Berlin and the lives of our officers." I'll open it up for any questions, comments, and then hopefully a motion.
If there are no questions, if there are no questions, I feel honored to be able to move that, that we approve this, this motion.
So I have a recommendation to approve the motion by Vice President Burrell, and a second by Councilmember Mer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that Motion 2023-04 passes unanimously. I think that this is something we've all felt, is something that we should have done a long time ago, and I'm glad that we're able to do it now. We're going to break stride with something that we typically do during meetings, the behind-the-scenes part, where you see us sign all the paperwork. One of those things basically formalizes the process. So we would like to do that down at this table this evening with the council, invite all of our law enforcement officers from Berlin up this evening, and have our town administrator join us as well. So if you don't mind, we're going to sign this document together. Dean's giving out the numbers. Congratulations. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again.
All right, get in here. Snuggle up and get comfy.
Let me fill out the permits on that first.
You can stand in front of me.
No, fill in here. Come on, come on.
Someone on the other side.
Fill in here.
You put the same size.
Well, that's why we're here.
I'm not going to argue. This is the safest meeting I've ever been to.
This is a good day.
This is a very good day.
Okay.
It's a serious matter.
What else do you have? The entire Berlin department in one location.
Congratulations. Let's, uh...
Congratulations.
I got a little more here than what you want.
Thank you all. Yes, please don't feel like you have to stay the rest of the evening. That's why we spend things up a little bit.
But no, we don't mind that. We didn't have to get you.
Good job, chief.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one thing real quick.
Yes, sir.
I'm very pleased, happy, no microphone here, that, again, the community came out and supports in such a way overwhelmingly for this venture. Even more so, unanimous, unanimous decision to vote tonight. Again, that support itself transcends beyond tonight. Again, this is one of the most important things that have ever happened to me as chief, again, over two decades. And to go ahead and have this happen tonight, and know that we have officers now who are not worried about when their, you know, what we would call golden years come around, that they are supported, and they don't have to work forever to go ahead and reach goals. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
If this will mean we're leaving, then you know.
I said it would have been even better if we had, like, officers sitting here tonight saying, like, "We're coming to Berlin now."
We are, maybe that's a nice thought.
We are hiring people.
Good job, Kelsey.
All right, so up next, we do have another monumental moment, an announcement, and I would like to actually turn the announcement over to our Electric Utility Director, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
You're going to go up there anyway.
Well, announce, announce what we're doing so that people know, and then, and then we'll come together and do it.
Today, today we're recognizing Caleb Hunter. He has graduated from the lineman's training program. He is the first employee in the history of Berlin to graduate from a four-year lineman training program. So this is very important. Thank you for that.
Come on, come on up here.
Caleb, you got us, Tim.
You gotta get one with everybody, too.
Yes, yes, we'll get everybody, but I want to get one with Caleb, too. Do you want your family up here with you as well?
Uh, we can do this stuff first.
Okay, all right. So before Tim does this, Vice President Burrell and I remember this time that Tim came into a meeting, and he said, "You know, I've got this idea. We should start bringing in apprentice and put them through the program, and they're going to graduate, and they're going to be, it's going to be great for us." Do you remember that time? And now, finally, we get to see our first candidate, Caleb, come through and reach that milestone. It's huge for Berlin, and it's huge for you, and congratulations. Thanks.
When Caleb started here in 2018, I believe, we enrolled him straight into the lineman training program, and just to give you a little history on it, prior to that, we had three other employees that tried to go through the program, and they left for various reasons and did not complete it. The program is four years long. You go to school twice in a year for a week at a time. There's over 8,000 hours of on-the-job training that goes along with it, and there's all kinds of testing. The modules that are, there's four modules, which have two steps in each module. Each module is about that thick, so it's a lot of testing and training that goes into this to become a certified lineman. So tonight, I would like, you haven't seen this yet, I've actually had it for a few days. This is his diploma, where he graduated from the lineman training program. Just to read a little bit of it, it's Northwest Lyman College Power Delivery Programs. Caleb Hunter, under the sponsorship of Virginia, Maryland Delaware Association, in the Town of Berlin, has successfully completed the lineman worker certification program, modules 1, 3, 4. He graduated on January 11th, 2023.
You want to get one? Get your family up here. Come on. Okay, all right. We got one. Let's get somebody back there. Is there anybody else you want to get up here?
Now, I think we've talked a lot about this evening, we were talking a lot about
LEOPS and important work. All of our employees do really important things. I think it's also important to note, and Alan, who's, what's Alan's title exactly?
Chief Flyman.
Chief Flyman. So Alan is the Chief Flyman of our electric utility, and he said to me, "You know, linemen are firemen's heroes." And I said, and I used to be a fireman, so I was like, "You know, I never thought of it that way, but they really are." And it brings into the context the important work that all of you do. You're out there when the weather's not favorable, and you're out there dealing with energy that, I mean, is not household current. It's, it's dangerous stuff, so it goes a long way, which is why the training is very important, but you all have a very important job. So thank you for the work that you do and the entire Electric Utility.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Agenda Item Number, well, it's the presentation of speed cameras. Our Chief of Police Arnold Downing is running point.
Good day, good day, everyone. We actually have two representatives from Red Speed Camera. They are one of the, again, I think the only ones that are actually...
We might just want to give it one on that ball, let everybody kind of... Sorry.
Good job, Caleb.
Yep, congratulations.
Nice work, Caleb.
All right, so go ahead, chief. Thank you.
The reason we're here is to go ahead and present the speed cameras themselves. What we are having is one of the top vendors to come and actually talk about them and answer the questions. Those are the only ones in Worcester County, I'm sorry with that, and they're throughout the state of Berlin, and they'll actually tell you to other places. They're going to do a short presentation. Mr. Curtis Zalati and Mr. Linder are going to go ahead and, after reading that presentation, and then we'll be able to go ahead and answer any questions.
Thank you. And thank you both for being here with us this evening.
Sure. So my name's Kurt Zalati. I am a principal and investor in Red Speed USA through Blackshower Advisors, which is our company that does marketing, raises our profile in the midland area, mainly in Maryland. We are currently, throughout the eastern shore, we have the most municipalities in the state. So we're in Delmar, Eastern Pittsville, Snow Hill, Rock Hall, and Churchill, among other places, and we have quite a few accounts in those areas, in the upper west side of Maryland. So I was born and raised in Maryland as, Erwin was a Prince George County policeman. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Erwin. Linder is our project director in Maryland. So in this day and age, automatic traffic controls have become more effective because they're utilized as a law enforcement fault identifier. It's important, it helps the police, they're not actively involved in giving out tickets, stopping people, which sometimes is good and sometimes bad. It's, it's great in this day and age, where there's not a whole lot of interaction between the public. They get a ticket, and they typically pay their ticket, and the revenue goes to the state, to the municipality. The International Institute for Highway Safety has done a study on speed cameras, and they proven, in Maryland specifically, it raised in each area a drop in speed from 38% to 89% on each site that they use. And I've got the collateral here, which actually you can go in.
Can you share that with us after your presentation?
Sure. Bring it all up. You've got, Erwin's going to bring up the study, some of the lighting, the material we use also.
The devil's a little weird. If you want, just hand it to Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go through this in short order, and it'll be a short video, which kind of explains everything. So right, currently, under Maryland law, all speed zones must be installed within a half mile of school zone. Unless you're in Prince George County or Montgomery County, they got to carve out through the legislation.
What is their carve-out?
Their carve-out is they can also put automatic traffic controls in areas outside speed zones if they are residential districts, which is why if you travel around Washington, DC area, there's speed cameras all throughout Montgomery County.
And the reason I ask, there's legislation, I think, for PG County in this session, to change the parameter, or the radius, I guess, for that? Is that factual?
They're going to expand, they're going to expand the area that they can put them in.
And is that just in PG County?
Just in Prince George County. And you can, yeah, it's a, it's a whole legislative process, which I'm surprised other jurisdictions haven't tried to do it, but it's another topic. But anyway, so the law states you have to be going 12 miles an hour or more in order to get a ticket. If you're going 10 miles an hour, you're not going to get a ticket through these school zones. And the school zones are active from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. All of it, our equipment runs all the time, and it also is a great tool for law enforcement because they never stop running. Our cameras are all video, there's no, they're not still photos, and the police can pull videos off them anytime they want. All the processing of the tickets, the fines, and the collections are done through vendors like us, and the municipality only has to have an officer typically once a week go through the violations and approve them. So it's not a lot of time out of the police department in order to have the tickets processed. And all the, basically, all the backend work gets done by the vendor. Each municipality, every year, has to report, it's called an SMS report, and they report how many fines came through, revenue that came through, how much they received, how much the vendor received. That's typically done by the vendor, and then the municipality approves it, and they send it into the state. And it has a lot of great data for us and the municipalities, because they can see how effective the program's going, they can watch speeding drop off because violations start to drop off. And that's, the other big factor for us is Red Speed, and I can get into some, I'll just touch on it quickly, man, is that we, a lot of other vendors will use a fixed-price contract, and will say, typically, it's, here's a camera, it's $2,500 a month, and, you know, it's a five-year contract, and you pay that $2,500 no matter how much revenue's coming in. We typically do put cameras in, and our contracts are fee-based, so when a violation comes through, we charge a fee for the violation, which is, was it 99 cents?
Yep.
Yeah. And then at each process that we do, we print a ticket, it goes out, we charge $6. In the end, it's a $40 ticket, that's the most you can charge in the state of Maryland. Typically, our rate is 40% of the revenue, and the municipality gets 60%. Most of our, of the other vendors in the state who operate in Maryland, it's almost a clip, it's 60% to the vendor, 40% to the municipality. So we like to think that we are the low-cost and have the most effective equipment, because it behooves us to have very good equipment in, because the capture rates are so high. So that's, that's our program in a nutshell, yeah.
Yeah, we're also located in Georgia, Illinois.
Florida.
Florida. We have, in Illinois, we have the most cameras in the state. Our, our support, our customer support's very important, so there's, there's a lot of person that people call. It's not a 1-800, you know, push, push one, push two type of thing. So we have a, we have more than 30 employees for support, visited, seen, seen what they do. So we're much more of a one-on-one type of company versus you're just amassed amongst the many people, if you will. So it takes the onus off of either the police officer or for yourself, the blame for not having correct customer service and contact. Obviously, we know when something goes wrong, it's, it's your fault, not, not, not the cameras, if you will. But yeah, now we can start the video.
So if we can run the website.
Red Speed USA is a leader in the auto road.
Red light.
Yes. With a unique video-based system designed to maximize red light and speed violation capture and enhance public safety through its four-in-one platform, red light enforcement. The Red Speed System supports seven lanes of enforcement with multiple lane-specific HD video cameras. In combination of 3D radar or e-tron sensors, Red Speed System can capture multiple simultaneous speed and/or red light violations across all seven lanes of enforcement. Red Speed utilizes infrared illumination technology for night enforcement, eliminating the need for driver-distracting white flash. Unique to the Red Speed System is the license plate rewind function. All competitor systems produce two still frames for evidence packaging, therefore missing the violation in case the still images are unclear, illegible, or obscured by their vehicles. Red Speed System allows for precise frame-by-frame extraction of license plate images by accessing archived video directly from the camera and then rewinding or fast-forwarding until a clear license plate image emerges. This results in a documented 25% increase in violation capture initiatives. Video. The Red Speed System provides both real-time video streaming and 45-day video archive access via any web-enabled device, PC, smartphone, or tablet. Authorized users can access HD video from any of the overview and lane-specific video camera streams, define the time of interest, and download the video clips directly on their device. No forms, no requests, no delay in waiting for a vendor to respond. Lane-specific video cameras are zoomed in to provide clear identification of vehicle features, color, make, model, and license plate images for all lanes of enforcement. Combination of overview video and lane-specific video allows for crime investigators to not only trace a vehicle through the intersection, but also read its place. Speed. Red Speed's speed camera technology uses 3D object tracking radar detection, an above-ground, non-invasive detection method with lane-specific identification and speed triggers that record accurate speeds within plus or minus one mile per hour. The radar is powerful enough to simultaneously track up to 350 objects in its field of view. In addition to issuing speed violations, comprehensive speed statistics are compiled by the system and can help clients determine if there is a need for additional enforcement. Accurate speed readings can also be used in evaluating and setting the threshold for right-turn red light violations. The system performs a daily startup calibration check and will start enforcement only after all checks are passed successfully. Red Speed's speed cameras work in all weather conditions and can be configured to work simultaneously with red light enforcement, video surveillance, and automatic license plate recognition. License plate recognition. The license plate recognition module is a real-time license plate identification system with a centralized plate archive across all LPR-enabled cameras that work simultaneously with the red light and/or speed enforcement system. LPR leverages existing camera photo enforcement hardware and scans all vehicle plates that pass by the lane-specific video camera's field of view. LPR supports real-time amber alert functionality with text or email notifications to individual or groups of authorized recipients. LPR can import existing state and federal hot lists, generate custom hot lists, and export plate archive databases to third-party applications already in use by the customer.
Okay, so that, that's our system in a nutshell. The nice thing about that is the chief or anybody that's authorized can go on their handheld, go on their squad car computer, punch it up, something happens, they can pull it up, go back through and find, you know, violas that may or may not have come through. The LPR service is an additional package that it's not a... and then rewinding or fast-forwarding until a clear license plate image emerges. This results in a documented 25% increase in violation capture initiatives. Video. The RedSpeed system provides both real-time video streaming and 45-day video archive access via any web-enabled device, PC, smartphone, or tablet. Authorized users can access HD video from any of the overview and lane-specific video camera streams, define the time of interest, and download the video clips directly on their device. No forms, no requests, no delay in waiting for a vendor to respond. Lane-specific video cameras are zoomed in to provide clear identification of vehicle features, color, make, model, and license plate images for all lanes of enforcement. Combination of overview video and lane-specific video allows for crime investigators to not only trace a vehicle through the intersection, but also read its plate. Speed. RedSpeed's speed camera technology uses 3D object tracking radar detection, an above-ground, non-invasive detection method with lane-specific identification and speed triggers that record accurate speeds within plus or minus 1 mile per hour. The radar is powerful enough to simultaneously track up to 350 objects in its field of view. In addition to issuing speed violations, comprehensive speed statistics are compiled by the system and can help clients determine if there is a need for additional enforcement. Accurate speed readings can also be used in evaluating and setting the threshold for right-turn red light violations. The system performs a daily startup calibration check and will start enforcement only after all checks are passed successfully. RedSpeed's speed cameras work in all weather conditions and can be configured to work simultaneously with red light enforcement, video surveillance, and automatic license plate recognition. License plate recognition. The license plate recognition module is a real-time license plate identification system with a centralized plate archive across all LPR-enabled cameras that work simultaneously with the red light and/or speed enforcement system. LPR leverages existing camera photo enforcement hardware and scans all vehicle plates that pass by the lane-specific video camera's field of view. LPR supports real-time Amber Alert functionality with text or email notifications to individual or groups of authorized recipients. LPR can import existing state and federal hot lists, generate custom hot lists, and export plate archive databases to third-party applications already in use by the customer.
Okay, so that's our system in a nutshell. The nice thing about that is the chief or anybody that's authorized can go on their handheld, go on their squad car computer, punch it up. Something happens, they can pull it up, go back through and find violators that may or may not have come through. The LPR service is an additional package that it's not a lot of funs to do it, but it's pretty nice to use. I happen to live in Fenwick, and two summers ago, they had a shooting on a street right behind my house, which is very unusual at Fenwick, but it would lock people up. And within about 30 minutes, Ocean City had their LPR cameras up, and they tracked the guys that did, backed down to Ocean City, and they made arrests on these guys. So the, and there's no cost for the police department to use the system whenever they want. They pop it open, log in, look for whatever they want. It's a great, it's a great tool.
So Kurt, the question is, how much does the equipment actually cost for town?
Okay. So what happens is, we come in and we sit down with you for the powers that be and say, where do you think your problem is? And let's try, you know, within the parameters of being within a half-mile of the school. I drove to the town, familiar with the town anywhere because I have friends that live here, but obviously down by the Worcester School, the old country school that I used to call it, my friends were there. And then the elementary school, you've got an intermediate school, and you've got daycares on the road coming in from 113 North. And we would put in a, we'd do a traffic study there and leave the cameras there for what, two or three days?
Yep, three days.
Yeah, three days. And it will generate a report, and it'll say, you had 1,000 cars come through. Most of them came through between, what, around 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning or in the evening. 60% of them did the speed limit, 20% went over. It's, you know, five or 10 that went through at 40 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour. You get all the data, and then we do projections on, you know, where that would shake out once we put the cameras up. And frankly, if there's not a problem, it's not worth us doing, it's not worth you guys doing. If you don't have people speeding down the street, there's no reason to put them in. And the cost is, there is no cost to it. If, once we do the study and we think we've affected places to put the cameras in, you go ahead and put the camera, there's a process you have to go through. You have to write a town ordinance, which we can help you do, and which authorizes the cameras. You have to go through, the SJA has to approve where the cameras go in if it's on a state road. And we have to put, usually we'll put temporary cameras in on battery while we build out the site because you have to bring in power, you have to bring cables because it's all over the internet. And it's typically just a concrete pad with a pole. Do we have boxes, little boxes, or we have intersections, we put poles up because it can shoot down into an intersection if you have a red light camera?
Can the camera monitor two lanes of traffic going different directions?
You have to put one camera on one side, one camera on the other.
I thought that was the way it was, but then after watching your video, I was like, man, does one camera capture both lanes?
Yeah, it's all rear. The law states that you can only take a picture from the rear because they don't want violations of privacy coming through the front windshield. So it's the owner of the car gets the ticket. No matter, here's driving it, if you own the car, that's your ticket. You can go back to your son and say, hey, son, you gotta pay this ticket.
Other than the local, the local permit that we'd have to get from the town, we do all the permitting. We hire the actual engineering, we do the site plans. So all those things, we do all the legwork, so it's not an overhaul as far as asking what's in it.
So how big are these cameras?
They're cameras themselves are small, they're in a box, I mean, they're, you know, this big. We put them, if they're on a box, they're in a stainless steel box on the side of the road because, you know, we don't want them to be vandalized.
But ultimately, this is going to have to go near somebody's front yard.
If they're on, if they're on, if you drive, well, I'm trying to think, I drive past a lot of them, and you... Typically, typically, the box is about, it's about this high.
12 by 16.
And it's like this.
Yeah.
It's a silver box, it looks like a utility box, like a transformer box, but it's cleaner, it's not...
Yeah, if you're in front of the middle school or a high school, you don't have that issue.
Yeah.
Is it the pole or is it the box?
We probably put, we put a box as opposed to a pole because it's not in a traffic, it's not in an intersection. Poles, we put typically at intersections because we need to shoot down as they're going by. And you only have two lanes on every road anyway.
Just the image you provided was a big pole. I think that's why.
That was for a giant intersection. We have an example, we have, we just, Sarasota, Florida. 260,000 cars get through this intersection in a day, and they've got eight lanes. I think four in four and two turn lanes, probably more. And it shoots every single car that goes through there. It's amazing what it picks up.
So there's a guy in town that drives a Mustang GT. If he were to obscure his license plate, you know, you see people put those clear shields over it or whatever, does this still read the plate or is that...?
It will because Chief Downey will pull him over and tell him. I mean, if they're going to obscure the plate, they're going to obscure the plate.
But you see that happen.
Well, it's not, typically, they used to obscure them with a reflective coating because the flash would hit it. Anyway, the flash would bounce off the reflective coating. So we don't have flash, so we get it anyway.
Yeah, one of the major, one of the complaints recently in the last couple of years has been with the flash, it alarms people. And when it alarms them, they put on brakes too quickly coming through and people behind them, and they end up rear-ending, rear-ending. So that's something that we've eliminated. Just to give you an idea of the redundancy, which I think is important from my perspective, a retired police officer. What happens is, you'll, someone will get a ticket. We have a reviewer up in our customer service. That ticket or that plate or image will go through them. They'll make the determination, they'll enhance the picture, they'll try to make sure that the plate is correct. It goes from them to their supervisor, who okay's it. Then we send it to your officer, and then your officer has autonomy.
In a batch, by the way.
And it's in a batch, right? Yeah, so it goes to them. They then look at all of the data that we've collected, that we've affirmed or whatever, and they still make the determination. And the reason why we do that is because you have local vehicles, you have unmarked vehicles, you have county vehicles, those type of things. Some of our law people don't know who they are or what kind of vehicle that is, so they have the ability to go ahead and just dismiss that.
More than red lights, they have vehicles going through.
Right, all types of things, so.
Tell me about court challenges. How successful are you with the court challenges? And how is this camera calibrated?
Okay, so it has to be based on SJA rules. It has to be calibrated by an outside company once a year. But as you notice, it calibrates itself daily. And in regards to going to court, which I do often, one of the things that we do is that when you do have court, I will show up in court. And I'll have the daily logs, I'll have the data. But we also support that and send that over in an email to the officer. So they'll have the same things. And so when I show up, if they have any issues in regards to calibration, I'll have those that monthly or that year of calibration copy, as well as any documents that support the officers. So at a docket in Hyattsville, we had 13 people, and it was 13 guilty.
And it's a small fine, it's $40. Most people don't contest them because it's harder to go. The other thing that's nice...
I learned tonight that they will get me all the way in the far lanes.
The other thing is, you've got a political thing in a small town where it's like, we put out, you have two weeks when they, if you, if and when you ever do it, you have a two-week period that's all warranted. You put it out, you advertise and say, the cameras are coming in, there are going to be warnings for two weeks, this is where they are. There's signs up in front of them that say, speed camera, school zone ahead. So it's like, everything you can do to put, that can possibly do is done, and we do it. We actually put the signs up.
And the local paper.
And the local paper, you got it advertised. And so once the people are there, they stop speeding. A lot of times, we'll go places and they're like, oh my God, I can't believe you're, you know, speed cameras. I'm like, well, we only put them in school zones. Do you want to speed through a school zone? And everybody goes, their head goes down, no, I don't want to speed through a school zone. So anyway, that's, so that's what happens. And the local town people, typically, they abide by the law. They know the schools, the cameras are there, and they slow down. And it's typically the tourists who come through, zoom through the town if they get a ticket.
Ultimately, I'd suggest that it's, initially, it's 50%, 60% local after maybe a week. And then after that, it goes to 80%. Folk that either don't live in town, just coming to town, 20%. It's just people who just don't care about the school zone that are local, it's nothing to do with that. But in regards to the actual infractions per area, and most of it's 80% out of the actual local area, or if you just come over there.
So, everybody knew I had questions, I'm here writing. So was I correct that it was $2,500 a month per camera?
All right, so I was stating that most vendors, that's how they charge. So I said, all right, we're putting two cameras in, it's going to be $5,000 a month to the town, that's your cost. And whatever, however many tickets that come through, you're still paying them $5,000, okay? The way we do it is, we fund the cameras, put them all in, and we take our revenue out of the speed, the ticketing revenue comes to us. And you get the report, says this month, there was $10,000 in speeding violations came through. Money gets into a lockbox, we send it straight to the town, and the town is typically going to get about $6,000 of that $10,000 in round numbers. And I'm not, I'm using very round numbers right now. But we have, I can share your data that we have, how we...
Yeah, we actually have some data.
Little data.
That's rather...
But it's generally a 60/40 split, and it's actually no cost to go ahead and put the cameras in to us.
So if I share you, if I share you this...
Kurt, before you go, I want to stay on that point just for one second. It'll be brief. But I really like that you, your company comes in and does an evaluation because it's one thing for us to feel those complaints about speed, and we feel those frequently. But it's going to be really nice for you all to vet that out and say, okay, hey, there is actually a speeding problem here, and we want to address it by this, rather than just putting the camera on. So I just think that means a lot.
The other thing that's nice about the information we get off the study and also off the cameras every year is how much traffic's coming through. You can use that, you can use that for real estate development. Someone's coming in, you go, hey, we have 10,000 cars coming through here in a week.
Is there a charge for this stuff?
There's not a charge for this stuff, okay.
And then I heard you, I think I heard you say that the study, you keep it up for three to four days, is that...?
We put the cameras in for three, for four days. So we get a, we'll try to get like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or, you know. And obviously, here, it's going to make a difference when we do it in the dead of winter as opposed in the summer, you've got a lot of tourists in town every year.
When schools are in session and all those things.
Yeah, and school, like when school's in session, you know, schools are used, the schools are used far beyond 6:30 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon when the whole major school gets out. At night, you've got PTA, they've got basketball games, you have things like that, so it's nice to have them near the school.
What kind of infrastructure do you exactly need for the boxes?
We need power, so we go through, are you guys the power supply?
A gentleman right over there.
That makes it easy. So we need power, and we need some type of vendor that. And we need SJA approval, which typically, we're in a good relationship with them, so it's not, typically, it's not hard, as long as they're not that busy. The state moves slower sometimes. So I was going to show, if you're interested, I'll show you how we, the revenue works.
Yeah, they're looking at it.
Okay, so we have 18 accounts now. If you see in the top right-hand corner, it says RedSpeed accounts. That is now 18, but this is historical data, and this is 2021. A lot of these cameras have been in for 10, 15 years now. So if you look at the bottom of the yellow, you'll see that our revenue, the government's share of the revenue is 63% if I'm reading that correctly. And we take 35% of the revenue. So if you look at the other, the competitors' accounts on the top left, those are accounts that we don't have. A lot of them are large accounts, Montgomery County, Prince George's County. Seat Pleasant's on there, but we actually just took them over. So if you look at the bottom of that one, the government or the municipalities are taking 29% of the revenue, and the vendors taking 45%, which obviously is in the 100. And the rest of it is fees that are going out to, I might even show where they go. It's kind of weird how they report because our reports are pretty easy to do. But the byline is the municipalities only get 29% of the revenue. So we historically are way above our competition.
Poor Chevrolet is the, well, Chevrolet's got something going on there.
When you put it in there on wrong street, I can tell you I've been through Chevrolet a lot.
Chevrolet had, so obviously, there's a problem there because whoever did the report didn't do it right, and they've got fees involved somewhere, and maybe they got charged, they got charged extra for cameras that went in.
Chief, do you think the LPR or something that would be, we would be interested in?
We would have to really go ahead and look at the location. Again, when we're talking about something like that, it has to be a well-traveled type of road for us to have it being really beneficial in that zone.
What is the status for the possible, I think it's still preliminary in the new Buckingham School? Is that, that's like really...
It's very, it's just a proposal.
It sounds like a draw.
It certainly has not approached the town with any plans of...
It's a half-mile. You actually have signs up right now that say, school zone, delineate where the school zone is.
So, in taking into account the half-mile, that's only in, that only incorporates the public schools or the actual schooling schools. So that doesn't take into account childcare facilities, daycare centers, and those that are right there.
I think daycare centers are under the wall now.
Yes, it has to be, it can't be called a daycare center.
Early learning.
Well, I think everything's...
I had start program and follow-up.
State High would actually determine what it is by definition. So it's not something that we would just say, again, State High would actually tell you yes or no.
So if we went in front of Steve McCadie's, hey, we want to put a camera on 113, State High's going to go, ah, ah.
But they'll be able to go ahead and do on the side, yeah.
Seahawk.
On Seahawk.
Flower Street.
But they'll get at least...
Correct.
Did you say no Flower Street?
No, 50, no 113.
I'm talking alternate 50.
Now, Chief, I think in the past, has the state funded or provided grants? Do you all know this as well, for the LPR?
So here's, this is interesting because I was having this conversation when I was in a conference room listening, after we came in and listened to your budget talk. We work with a, we work with a government affairs firm, and they get a lot, I was saying, these guys need to talk to Greenwell because they get funds. They've been, they got Hancock, a half million dollars. And they, and he gets these grants, and they use them. You can say, all right, we need this grant, we're going to use it for law enforcement, and we're going to put it in such and such. They go out and get the money, and it comes in. It's pretty, it's pretty substantial, the amount of funding that they get, these small municipalities. And Hancock's smaller than Berlin's.
And I feel like in some of the funding reports that I've seen from the state, they have funded that LPRs in the past.
Yeah, you can use it for the new, the whatever, the, not PPP, the, what's the new?
ERPA.
ERPA, yeah.
Or is it the bipartisan structure?
You can, yeah, you can use that for, like, we have AI technology that we use off our LPR, which is really nice, like, really busy place, like Laurel's looking at it because they have so much traffic going through the town. And they can use those ERPA funds for that. Um, and they can use those RPA funds for that. That's, I mean, that's, that's all they're, they're earmarked for that.
All right. Well, does the group have any additional questions or comments for the folks from Red Speed? It sounds like our next step would be compiling a list of potential areas and then maybe we could have you all come out and survey those with the chief and.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. We can do, so that is, the, the process is you can do an RFP, you can do a direct placement and say, all right, we're just picking you guys. Or you can do a piggyback and say, well, Colemore Manor just went through, like, we just went through RFP with, with Brentwood, Maryland. Um, so we had to go through the whole bidding process. You can piggyback right off their contract. And yes, and then you do that. Once you, once you pick the method that you're going to go down the road, you, um, propagate the ordinance. Um, and then we get S H A and then we can do the studies without S H A, we just do studies.
Can you also send me a list of all, or send us a list of all the municipalities that you have in Maryland's?
Here we go.
Did I understand you to say that we could piggyback off of an existing contract?
Yes.
That already did the process.
Yes.
And this is updated?
That's, that's brand new. That's, uh, I think there's eighteen under now.
And can you clarify again, or am I, I'm sorry, these, when are these operational examinations? And when are, in general, speed cameras?
Start, start to finish, two months?
No, I mean, if they're operational already, they're in here.
Oh, are they operational now?
How many warnings?
I mean.
Like what warning? Eight to four, six to.
Oh, six AM to eight PM.
Six to eight PM.
Yes. Although the cameras run twenty-four seven.
So, is six to eight.
So for law enforcement, they're twenty-four seven. For violations, it's six AM to eight PM.
That's Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday.
Correct. Which is kind of crazy because we have to run in school.
Yeah.
Does that, does that include when schools are not in session in the summertime?
Yes, yeah.
They're, they're all year long and it's not seasonal.
So they're enforceable.
They're enforceable in the summer also. It's not, it doesn't cut off when, when school's out, like in May.
We do have, we do have a few municipalities that have a holiday schedule. That's, most don't, but some actually choose it to, so you can earmark it holiday if you want and we cannot.
Probably feel like speed on July fourth.
I, I, yeah, right. I mean, I'm.
Merry Christmas.
Now, is it possible for the, whoever that does, the new officers that have access to this to say, okay, hey, during the times that these are not operational, we see an uptick in speeding around this time? Can they get a report such as that and?
Yeah, they can run it themselves.
Run it, run it between nine PM and twelve, twelve AM if they want to run it or just for traffic alone.
Yeah. It's pretty easy to use. Once you're on the, once you're on the site, once you get.
Yeah.
Through the training. And we, we also provide the training for police department. Come in, do a training session. Here's the guys that are going to be working on it. There's five of them or four of them or whatever it is.
That's, that's me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both very much. I think we've covered a lot of ground. Chief, thanks for bringing the folks in. Uh, and we'll follow up with a list of areas and hopefully stay in contact.
And you have, that, that slide you guys have, um, in your possession, you can take a look at it, obviously. And you can see, you can find it, some of the towns, you can kind of project how much revenue you'd be looking at based on whether it's Fruitville or.
We, we don't project, but you can go ahead and see what.
Yeah.
Pittsfield did, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, you can go ahead and look and see what their cut of the actual dollar amount is.
Actually, it's two hundred and eight thousand. Problem is their cut is very small.
With Pittsfield.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying Fruitville. Yeah.
Yeah.
So just the last thing, twelve miles over and the ticket, and it clicks and you get the ticket.
So if you're going forty-two or forty-three, you're going to get the ticket. If you're going forty-one, you're not going to get the ticket.
Got it.
Forty-one.
The other thing is we could also, we can do handhelds also for the police department. So if, you know, you, officer, you've got a problem somewhere, give them a hand, give you guys a handheld. You can sit there, just run the handheld, no pulling anybody over. Tickets are automatically going straight to us.
How much are the handhelds?
Um.
Don't think, I think that's part of the.
Yeah, I don't think they're any, I don't think.
That's a fee generator as well.
It's a fee generator, so.
Yeah.
All that makes money is a percentage.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you both for agreeing.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate your, 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 your time.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is agenda item number four A, which is the special permit, uh, application by the American Legion Post one, two, three. So I got a call last week when we signed it. Um, from Vince Holloway, they're having, let's see, um, uh, convention or group for the permit saw that says friend finish boot camp in Paris Island and is, it's a coming home party. Uh, the date for the permit is February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, and they're requesting our approval on this. It is something for some action.
Yeah, I, I just, is this the same event that went to your office around the same time last year? And there was a whole discussion about the thirty days?
No, not that I can recall because this says friend finish boot camp, Paris Island, coming home party.
Got it.
I don't think that occurred last.
And this was on, if they submitted this?
Uh, they actually called me, Mary, was it, did I say last week?
Yeah, it was last week. I think we got it Friday morning.
Okay.
Which is why it wasn't able to be in your packet. We didn't get it until after the pandemic.
And just to note, this is not, uh, to be held at a town location. This is at their location, it just for their, uh, for their permit, they do need approval from the American Council.
They don't have a permit for Sunday alcohol, so this is a special one day.
I'll do approve, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
So we've got a motion by Councilmember Nurr.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Let the record reflect that this is special Sunday permit, uh, for the American Legion Post one, two, three, passed unanimously. Thank you. Up next is the agenda item number four C, which is the release of warranty on Berlin's street resurfacing project and our town administrator, Mary Bolson.
Included in your packet is a letter from, uh, D V F recommending that we release the warranty. And there is a list of the streets and the work that was done. This is pretty standard stuff. Town staff has looked at the streets, there are no outstanding issues. So we're recommending release and warranty at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for our town administrator?
No more questions.
Got a motion by Vice President Burrell.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Horace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Let the record reflect that the release of warranty on Berlin's street resurfacing passes unanimously. Up next is agenda item number five, which is the PJM quarterly report and our electric utility director, Tim Moore.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the PJM quarterly report for October through December. Uh, the energy sold was eleven million, uh, forty-two, two hundred and fifty. Uh, AMP bill, which is American Municipal Power, uh, that bill was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. The PJM charges were four hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. Uh, the PJ, PJMA R R credit was fifty-three thousand, two. Fuel loop, other, uh, cost, that type, uh, that, which is the power plant, uh, that seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven. Total power cost was seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, the cost, the cost per K W H sold was zero point zero six six zero four. Uh, just to give you a comparison to the last quarter prior to that, which was July through September, um, the average cost per K W H sold was zero point zero seven four two one. So it actually decreased, uh, for this quarter versus the quarter before that. Any question?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for our electric utility director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is not, there's no need for approval on this, I don't think, correct? Pretty sure.
There is not.
Thank you. All right. So up next is our general and enterprise funds quarterly review and it's the second quarter for FY twenty-twenty-three and our finance director, Natalie Slade, number one point.
Good evening. This is our six months, uh, financial performance, all the numbers. Compared to our budget demands fiscal twenty-three, I'm not going to go in details for all the slides. There have not changed since previous time, but just a reminder that our general fund responsible for all the general operations and main revenue source for general fund are taxes, our property taxes, uh, this is for six months. We have received three point one million dollars in that category of the property tax. It's revenue, um, consists of real estate tax, property tax, and your utility tax as well included. So we are on a good track to receive the full amount. I hope so. Other taxes, um, consist of room tax and state local income tax at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Visances and permits, it's all our building and slenex license and review, um, um, from the buildings, eighty-eight thousand. Intergovernmental revenues, this category consists mostly of grants. There are state, a police grant and, uh, other small grants, eight hundred and forty-two thousand. Service charges to other funds is our, our overhead allocation and reimbursement from the utility funds or general fund, um, station in the operational activities. Um, we have fifty percent, which is half mark at the end of the year, we will report that portion of it. Other service charges, um, in this category, we have our commercial waste collection reported and, um, there's small amounts from fingerprints and market finds. We have sixty thousand, so this category is almost a budgeted amount. Impact fees collected, forty-six thousand, projected to receive hundred and thirty-five. It's a little bit behind, but I think, um, as spring breaks down, maybe we'll get somewhere. Earnings on investments, that's basically interest income for the cash amounts that are seen in different accounts for the general fund in bank. So overall, we are at forty percent, forty-one percent to be exact, to be collected of all the revenues by the end of fiscal twenty-three. It's a good mark, which is a little bit less below the fifty. So from the budgeted amount of nine million, we are at five point three as of right now. Um, same slide from previous first quarter. It's basically breakdown of our fiscal twenty-three budgeted revenue by source. I'm not going to go in details. It's what we have budgeted, just broken down by categories. Six months of expenditure for general fund, general government, um, public safety, public works, planning and community, recreation, debt service and capital outline. We are at two hundred and eighty-four and I will go into details in a little bit. So the balance, general fund balance, um, is at one point six million positive. So basically that's the fund balance as of December, um, revenues plus the expenditures. Categories for expenses of general fund broken down by category as budgeted for fiscal twenty-three. Adjusted comparison with prior year fiscal twenty-two, six months versus fiscal twenty-three, six months for the general fund balances. Non-spendable amount, um, those, this is the amount due from the stone water and the sewer. This number have not changed, but hopefully by the end of fiscal twenty-three, we will, we will reduce that amount. Restricted is our impact grant at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Committed, we have impact fees, debt reduction and the dusty recovery, um, included all in the community fund and it's at one point five million. Aside, there is insurance, police forfeiture, capital and stabilization, and also the community center at two point three. An on-time balance does the amount from difference for six months versus revenues versus expenditures. So we're pretty close to the fiscal twenty-two, um, in the amount, a little bit over, which is a good sign for us to close the year in, in the positive. Explanation of our general fund balance categories. Same graph for fiscal twenty-two as audited amount. Um, this last bar graph is promising because the on-time balance is growing higher. That's the balance broken down as of audited financial statements for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. We have seven point eight. Capital projects for general fund, we have a little bit of expenditure reported in the wage compensation study, which is, that is ongoing and will be completed by fiscal twenty-three by the end of this year. Building and grounds, we have expenditure for security cameras with fifteen thousand. Police department purchased duty handguns. Public works, we have twenty-twenty-two for, uh, two fifty super duty truck with thirty-seven thousand. In streets, we have expense hundred fifty-six, eight thousand dollars on, um, street paving and pathways. And, um, there is snow blowers being purchased. Parks and recreation, we have light yard equipment, Steven Digator Conference Station amount. Demolition here in park, that's just engineering fees, it's a small amount. It's, it's a continuous project. And then we have bus little lights for fifty-six thousand dollars. That's all I have for general fund unless we go back to specific slide.
Any questions for Natalie regarding the general fund?
Yeah, Natalie, um, I don't think, how much is left in unallocated RPA funds?
We have assigned all of the RPA funds.
They've all been assigned.
Yes, they're all earmarked for the projects. The only thing we have is the stone water, a certain amount that is not dedicated to specific project.
It's dedicated to stone waters.
It's dedicated for future stone water improvements, but not for a specific area. But other than that, we have allocated all of it.
So projects cost less, that those funds could be reallocated to a third project?
Yes, once the project is completed, um, example, I will pick with smart metering. We have allocated a million dollars, um, if the smart metering projects will come to eight hundred thousand, for example, we would have a remainder we will have to relocate.
And for maybe like, like a nice benchmark would be when we're entering, because some of the items have been assigned in the budget. So we'll be able to see and revisit that plan and say, okay, hey, this is kind of where we're falling with the, the schedule of things. But keep in mind, the window on that does not end with the fiscal year. It's a little bit of a longer duration. So, but it'd be a nice time to revisit and see what the progress is.
Sure.
Going to fiscal twenty-four budget, there's projects that have started but not finished will be rebudgeted and the amounts will be carried forward. Once we complete the twenty-four, we will look at it again and see if we have to move forward with fiscal twenty-five and rebudget again. Or the project is completed, the cost is X dollars and we have either, we could possibly need more funds for the project or have remainder.
What I was getting at, we've allocated money to fire company for specific uses. They've yet to use those funds. At what point do we say it's time to use it for something else?
I would say as we're getting closer to that point, which is twenty-twenty-four, December twenty-twenty-four, is when a project has to be assigned and.
Right.
You're saying, hey, well, we're moving forward with said project. So if we don't have that several months before that deadline, then we're going to have a conversation about where we're going. Because, I mean, we don't want those funds just reverberate.
Right.
That would be very important.
Yeah.
No, good call. All right. Any other questions regarding the general fund? Thank you.
Electric fund are very, um, on a good path. We have sixty percent remaining revenues and sixty percent remaining expenditures. It's almost like a perfect storm here. Um, revenues collected at two point six. Um, the expenditure is two point five. So as of six months performance, the electric fund has ninety-eight thousand dollars as a surplus or income. Um, everything looks fine. I think Tim and his department and all personnel does an amazing job and they're very good about tracking their budget as well. Transformers been purchased and street lights foundations. Transformers been purchased and street lights foundations in, um, as of December for electric. Water fund, um, there is a little bit of, kind of delay on the revenue for the cell services, um, doing okay, but special connection fees, it's a little bit behind, but water service and service charges are at the mark of six months where it is supposed to be. So the revenue is at 591, the expenditure is 599, which gives us a little bit of a loss, but I'm pretty confident that's going to catch up for the next six months.
Jamie, you finished strong last year.
Sewer fund.
You're just like the Chiefs, right?
Doing really good. Our major is a capital outlay out there for a million, but we're just kind of beginning when it's only $25,000 expense. So revenues are on a good path, um, expenditures are on a good path, but the capital outlay is a little behind. So if, we, we have a surplus of 683, but it's just the mark that the capital projects are not in the full state out there. But other than that, all expenditures are good. There's some projects for water fund, we have, uh, how, an avenue wall house, um, pH regulator system inside the treatment plant, and wells from Ranch Street, and also smart metering projects. We have big invoices been paid recently, so you will see on the third quarter for the actual inventory of the smart meters that we received already. Sewer fund, we have this cutter, scutter system, a skater system upgrade, um, and there is a William Street pump station and a Broad Street lift stations. Those projects are ongoing, and they're most likely will be budgeted for fiscal 24, they're not going to be completed. Stone water fund, I'm glad to see a positive number for six months, hopefully we will close the year as of right now. Already the loan to collect in revenues, $76,000 in expense, but again, capital outlay, we have budgeted 288 for capital improve, for capital stone water improvements, but only $16,000 as of right now. And I think EA is moving forward with the next phase, so that number will go up. And there is a Washington Street, Street Stone Train Replacement, a Franklin Nelson Stone Water Improvements, and the Ginevics for Stone Water. That's all I have for six months unless you have questions.
Thank you, any questions on the enterprise funds? Well, thank you for the report, very, very, very appreciate it.
Natalie, I just want to say, I don't have any questions on the funds or anything like that, but I just want to say that I do love these reports and I like the graphs. I think I said, uh, speaking for me, I'm a visual guy and it knows what's really great. Um, I understand that the quarterly reports are uploaded to the finance department section on our webpage, is that still correct?
Yes.
So I would think that, well, people have asked, that at the end of the, the, the second quarter report should probably include as a link in our Berlin newsletter, just to let people know that it's there, and if they can click on that from their mobile, it will take them right to this presentation. Is that possible?
Sure, that's possible.
Um, just to make that kind of, I, I'd like it to be manual, but I would like to make a motion that that link to the presentation is included in the following month of quarter two in the newsletter for the public.
I don't understand.
I'm just making a motion that the Berlin newsletter, after the quarter second presentation, has a link that goes to this presentation.
Is there any challenge with putting that one in?
No.
Okay.
I also want to add, if anybody interested to receive it live in person, I can distribute print it. If you can forward me the email link to have it sent in, I don't have a problem forwarding to anybody who's interested to have it. If they're having difficulties, still go to Berlin website, click in on finance and find the platform, our presentation, we're more than, we'll be pleased to forward it to that person. They don't even have to provide their email, there is a generic box that where we see sometimes requests, questions, phone numbers, that we can answer and forward, attach in my PDF or stop and buy the customer service with you printed in paper.
Info@berlinmb.com.
That's Jack for a formal vote on this.
I think Jack is trying to ensure that this happens annually, but, but, but,
As a session.
But I don't know if a motion is necessary for, for, for this.
No, because staff are saying that they're going to do it.
It can be done by, by, by Zach, direct at staff to do it annually, and, and, and it should be taken care of.
I think it would be done each, after each presentation, and they're done, those things go out monthly at the first of each month. It's not a problem to include, uh, here's an additional link, you know, so.
Correct, but it wasn't a problem two months ago either, and it didn't happen, so.
I don't, I don't think that was malicious on anybody's part.
I might say it's malicious, I'm asking it to be done.
Well, I, I think we all hear you, but I think the thing is, is that if you see that miss, then you say, hey, look, I asked for this, can you please make sure it happens? It's not erroneous, like, we're not trying to do it maliciously, um, and those things go out each month. So if it didn't make it in that one, and you said, hey, Zach, I didn't see it in there, I'd really like to see it, there's not a problem with us including it in the next month.
I'm not going to belabor the point, but the town administrator and I and everyone on this board have saw this enough.
Okay.
Which I said that we would include it going forward.
So that amazingly, we now have the resources to do it, which is great, so let's make it happen.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions regarding the quarterly financials? Thank you for that. Great job. Uh, up next is agenda item number seven, which is the town of Berlin's 2022 annual report and 2023 goals, and that is going to go to the next meeting, because what started out as a small report, I'm, I'm meticulous, man. Like, when I put something together, I wanted to be solid, and it's 20 pages and, and growing a little bit. Thankfully, all of our departments have provided their, uh, reports, and they're very complete, along with their goals. Uh, many of you have provided your thoughts for 2023, so it's really shaving up, it'll be something pretty awesome. But I do want to give that another pass before we, we publish, so that'll be on our next meeting agenda. And, uh, each department will get their page to be able to review and make sure we're factual. So, up next is agenda item number eight, which is a discussion, uh, for eight A is the fiscal year 2024 Worcester County Grant Request. It's hard to believe we're back here, uh, but each year, the county asks for our request. Uh, I have met with some of the commissioners, and I, I get the sense that there's not a large appetite to, uh, increase the level of funding that, uh, we may be getting in this next fiscal year. So I do want to go over the draft letter together, because it does kind of give some sticker shock, uh, but it's really not. Uh, we're asking for $703,013, uh, but just so that we can work through this together, you'll notice that there's a carryforward from FY, uh, 22 and 23 for the Rails to Trails program, uh, and that comes to $116,013, and that's paragraph two. Um, the next paragraph is, uh, asking for a carryforward for the Flower Street Roundabout, which is the Phase One. Uh, we've discussed speed as a challenge as it relates to Flower Street. Uh, I know that some of us have some different ideas, I'd like to work through that together, but, uh, it says, if there are any changes to the scope of the project, the town of Berlin will reach out to the Worcester County Commissioners before extending any portion of this funding, which I think is key, but it's nice to keep and retain that, uh, dollar value there.
When did, when did, when did we decide that, that the Roundabout on Flower Street was an actual endeavor of this council?
It was in the draft capital plan, and, uh, before that, request went to the commissioners to dig it out to the group. Um, we felt that speed was an issue, and, uh, the Roundabout is a, a potential, uh, catalyst for slowing folks down.
But I thought, when we talked about this Roundabout, I thought we'd said we'd get back to it.
We did, which is why I included that line, if there are any changes to the scope of the project, the town of Berlin will reach out to the Worcester County Commissioners before extending any portion of this funding.
So even after we talked about this, and Tim had made the point that the Roundabout would be a traffic concern possibly for vehicles that go to not only his department on Schofield Street, but other areas that travel that area, I thought we were going to talk about this again before we brought this back to the commissioners.
We received, we received the funding for FY 23, we're only partway through the year. Uh, the last conversation that I recall was actually with Vice President Burrell and Councilmember Nichols, where we talked about speed, and we said before any money is expended, we were going to have a conversation about potentially the best ways to address that.
I don't know, I, I don't know, uh, if a Roundabout on Flower Street is the best way to address a speed issue on Flower Street. I have always been under the expression that a Roundabout was used to facilitate the flow of traffic, and, uh, folks not having to, to stop, uh, uh, currently, there is not a stop sign on Flower Street except for the two ends, uh, that Seadark Road and, uh, Bay Street. I really don't think a Roundabout is the best way to perceive, and I know that, that, that a Roundabout would, would be, would be looked on very negative, uh, of, by that, by our.
You think that a Roundabout would be a negative thing for the community?
Yes.
And that location, was that?
Well, I mean, and it's.
I really do believe that, 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 uh, it would be perceived as, as another bother imposed upon the community because of those schools, uh, because of the school traffic.
And I think it's not just school traffic, it's the development traffic, it's the folks going, uh, to try and find a quicker way to Ocean City. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that contributes to that, and speed, I think Councilmember Nichols, you said speed's a challenge. I've heard speed's a challenge.
Speed's definitely a challenge, but again.
Chief, I think you all just responded to a collision where speed was a challenge on Flower Street, now.
That was not the actual fault then.
Okay, but was speed a factor?
Personally, it was a major factor.
Okay, well, the, uh, the thing is, is that I'm not saying the Roundabout is the set, set all be all solution. And I stand by the conversations that we've had, Vice President Burrell and Councilmember Nichols, which is why I've said in this letter, it's draft letter, that if there's any change to the scope, but I think it's important to protect the integrity of that amount, so that we don't lose that as a town. And I think that we have different views about maybe the best way to address it. But what we've said in good faith to the county is we're not going to expend your money to address and determine the plan. We will determine that with our money first, and if we determine that we don't need that 122, or that we want to redirect the flow, we will request that from you.
I, I, I really do believe that, that, that those funds could be redirected.
I'm not disputing that.
Toward a, a more positive, positive, uh, endeavor perceived by the community, yeah.
And, uh, are you saying related to speed and traffic flow?
Related, yes, to speed and.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm down with that, but I.
We should have a conversation much sooner than later, probably before you send this letter.
This needs to be sent, like, we need to come up with a plan for this, because there's no time to be able to resend the letter after the next council meeting, and I would like a consensus on what we are sending.
So at the next meeting, we couldn't have a conversation about.
The deadlines, uh, I think, a couple days.
Well, what, well, what, could we, could we earmark these funds to the presentation that, that, that we have just had concerning traffic cameras? And, and I know that would be a positive impact.
Yes.
On the, uh, speed on Flower Street.
But I, I think we're, we're saying a lot of the same things, I think it's important, and if we need to rephrase this paragraph, I'm open to that, I think it's important that we protect the integrity of that dollar amount, and.
Well, let's, let's talk about rephrasing, because now that you've said that you're okay with rephrasing, because for me, removing Roundabout from the conversation is completely the way to go. I mean, I'm not, I'm not even being facetious in a loose fit, but I think if, if we change this to, to, uh, focusing on trap, the traffic issues on Flower Street, rather than having Roundabout is as the, as the focus, the theme, the.
As the, as the cure.
Exactly.
But in that case, it may not cost that much money, it will cost us nothing to put a speedlight camera there.
You will lose that 122, right?
Right, that 122, I've talked to the commissioner, will have to go back.
It, it will have to go back if it's not justifiable.
If it's not used on, turned around.
Correct.
No, see, and I had a conversation with two commissioners.
Not just tied to Roundabout.
But they, but does, I, I don't think it has to necessarily be a Roundabout, though.
No, I think that, well, but I think you, everybody needs to know that the 122 is not plucked out of thin air. That 122 is taking into consideration potential easements that may need to be secured.
Sure.
Design and engineering costs, that's how we arrived at the total cost of the project, which is actually split between the town of Berlin and the county commissioners.
Right.
And the logic that was used for that is that the, the traffic flow is not just town of Berlin traffic. We're getting a lot of impact from outside areas, and that's why we've asked the county to partner with it. We've identified that intersection as potentially an intersection for improvement. I think where we differ is maybe in the best way to be able to address the speed at that intersection.
Well, even if, even if the, the noun Roundabout were removed and replaced with traffic flow, because redirecting traffic flow or dealing with traffic flow, it's going to cost a little, it's going to cost some money, may not be 122,000 or 120, yes, but it's going to cost some, that's not going to be at no cost, as is the, as are the, the, the traffic, the, the speed cameras, but Roundabout, or possible, I feel like saving Roundabout, again, I felt the more you say it, the more it's perceived, or we're, we're in a place where someone thinks that Roundabout's going to happen, and I don't think that Roundabout should happen. So I mean, if it were verbiage, and I don't want, I'm not saying I want us to lose 122,000, that's not, that's not at all what I'm saying, but this verbiage, I just, it just, it has never sat well with me, and I've made that clear, but I don't know. I'm leaving, you guys, what do you think?
Steve, are you indicating that they would not allow us to reallocate that funding?
I was told a little bit, we come back to a, and it's an unknown.
When I was told by two commissioners, they would support a reallocation, the project was.
And your reallocation was toward the community center, but I will, but I will say, but I will say that we asked the county commissioners for $15,000 for the community center, they said no. So just keep that in context too, that.
When they see this video, they might just keep it.
They probably would.
Well, I'm not telling you to keep it, I don't want you to keep it.
Well, and if it comes. I hope I would never have to say this again, but it, but if it comes to losing $122,000 and a Roundabout on Flower Street, I'd say so be it.
So do you want to strike it and just give them the money back?
No, I wouldn't put it toward the community center.
Yeah, I don't go.
He wants to preserve the funding.
Not even just preserving the funding, but we still need to do something about traffic, but I don't think Roundabout's a thing to do, because once you.
Which is why Councilmember Nichols, the last line of that says, if there are any changes, I took into consideration all the conversations that we have had this evening, and I summarized it in a capacity that I thought could get us across the finish line, and I wonder if, I question whether that's going to occur now.
Based to a possible Roundabout, is that going to keep the money?
I, I can't speak to that, but.
I just, I just can't say.
You say keep the money allocated towards that purpose, and then we'll talk about it, see if there's another use to it.
Exactly.
And then go to that. But he has to send this letter.
It's fine, keep it, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just, I'm not, I, I don't want to sit here and go round and round chasing my tail about this, but I don't think that roundabout.
Roundabout or roundabout?
But I don't think that roundabout is the way to go as far as I'm concerned. So if you want to keep it in the letter, keep it in the letter, and let it be known that I feel that we need to readdress.
And I want, I think we all want to readdress.
And we should have that conversation.
We should have that conversation.
Sooner rather than later.
But the goal is to retain a higher 22,000 dollars, potentially for the use of.
Traffic mitigation, not a roundabout.
You can summarize it, as long as the text gets us where we need to.
Traffic mitigation.
How do you, are, are there any suggested revisions for paragraph three? Can I ask that?
Traffic mitigation.
Where would you like to see that, please?
Take out roundabout, traffic mitigation.
Yes, ma'am. Is that how the group feels?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not telling you to say that because you're tired of the talking.
I'm, I'm not doing that, I'm, I'm not doing that. So, but I want to make sure that I'm capturing what the group looks like.
That'll work, stop.
So traffic mitigation, so it will read additionally in fiscal year 2023, the Worcester County Commissioners provide grant funding for traffic mitigation on Flower Street designed to mitigate, uh, okay, hold on, additionally enough fiscal year 2023.
To address, exactly, speed and improve safety within.
Address, hold on, I gotta write this, so let's make sure I understand what I'm making. Uh, traffic mitigation on Flower Street. So it'll read additionally in fiscal year 2023, the Worcester County Commissioners provide grant funding for traffic mitigation on Flower Street designed to address speed and improve safety within the neighborhood. Is that okay, or you want to keep Flower Street neighborhood?
It's Flower Street, yeah, yeah.
Because, okay, right, Flower Street neighborhood. The town is still working on efforts to improve, I can report on that part, I think we've got the context. Okay, um, any further changes for paragraph three? Uh, paragraph four addresses our request, which is a constant request, and the funding has been flat for FY22 and 23, and our request would be flat again for 24, and that is for Fire, Police and EMS, uh, funding to help offset public safety costs. How's group two? Okay, um, do we still feel grateful for the grant provided each fiscal year by the Worcester County Commissioners?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, up next is agenda item number 8B, uh, which is the 2023 Maryland Department of Transportation, MDOT Consolidated Transportation Program, uh, CPT request, and that is a draft also, I'd like to get that out tomorrow. Uh, this covers, let's see, so what's different from, uh, last year? We've removed, um, the traffic signal requests, or last fiscal, or last year, our request for traffic signal at 113 and South Main, that has been removed from this report because it's completed. With that being said, I have added the sidewalk request that we've stated in previous emails to MDOT, which includes sidewalks from, uh, Old Ocean City Boulevard, uh, from, okay, hold on, that's actually on page one starts, so from 346 to Route 818, or no, pardon me, on 346 from Sunlight Lane to Route 818, thank you all. Uh, and this is for from Sunlight Lane to Main Street to improve the pedestrian safety, it's what we discussed, it's just included in the report for the request, and then also sidewalks from, um, 818 to 377, which is William Street, and the reason I broke these out into two separate slots is because they're two separate things, one's business and commerce, one's pedestrian traffic, so I think it's smart to break those up. The other part is, oh, yeah, a roundabout, but that's still from last year, at the intersection of 818 and 346, but I think we could almost, I mean, there was an accident there this evening head on, but the, uh, I think that intersection should be addressed, and whether they'll have the space for a roundabout, probably not, so it might end up being a traffic light, but I think it's worth requesting.
Or at least a four-way stop.
Well, yeah, four-way stop, traffic light, whatever, I think.
But should we change that to be?
And the state would not allow four-way stops on that state, oh, definitely not. One thing, like on West Street, three-way stops in, in that way, it, it confuses people because they're not expecting to be there. If you're on 818, no one would be expecting to have a stop sign in the middle of a greater road. So, again, light is the best, um, thing, and actually removing the visual barriers, you know it's a slight turn, and you have a big pole, and you can't see, so one thing is trying to go ahead and relocate things that are actually in the visual path, and that's a big reason for a lot of accidents there.
And you'll notice the state, I'm, I'm not just saying we're around about for the light, the state, the state is actually shifting to quite a bit of the roundabout design for intersections like that. So whether we'll have the space, I don't know, but, um, it at least gets the conversation started. Crosswalks, that's something we've sent it, Jimmy's helped as well with sending that out for the pad sites, uh, to try and get those crosswalks into areas where we have those ADA pads, and that's just putting it on the formal request. Any, any suggestions or changes or revisions to this list, or any additions? I've asked the group already on that, but.
Is this like a ranking of priorities?
No, not, that's not the sense, they have never asked us to rank priorities. I just, I moved the items that were there last year up and added the stuff down at the bottom.
So Mayor, this is a, I don't have any additional thing, I just, but this is to, obviously you have to mail it out tomorrow.
No, I don't have to mail it tomorrow, but I'd like to get it out tomorrow.
Oh, sure.
I'd have to mail it before next meeting.
And when did you get the request for this?
Uh, I don't have that exactly in front of me. This, uh, MDOT report comes via email, the other one comes via letter, so they generally give about a month, month and a half to be able to compile those.
So you've had this for a month?
Uh, that, the MDOT one, I don't know the exact date, but I'd say I've probably had it for a month.
What about the commissioner?
About the end, probably a month, so.
It's an easy project for them to complete. You guys are going to bring the manholes up to grade?
Yes.
To Bay Street?
That's with the construction? Can we address that in the construction stuff rather than in this? Is it more, because it's still part of that project, right? They did that.
They just ignored it. But there's several that.
A lot? I don't know. What's it going to take for that, though? Just so we understand.
There's one on Bay, and then there's about three of them on.
And almost every one on, um, 818 from Cheers always to 113, or 50, excuse me.
Is that because of the, the height of the pipe? Or is it?
They didn't put a spacer.
I can't say what I want to say.
I want to get a general sense of the work, like, is it, is it an easy fix? Is it a hard fix?
It's, it's an easy fix, but you just have to ask somebody that knows how to fix it.
Contractor should have done it.
Yeah.
Well, the bad part is when they put the manhole risers in, they didn't pull their liners out, so the liners are about $77 apiece, so as of the, now, I have not pulled them out, because the only way to pull them out right now is you have to cut them out, and I don't feel the town's obligation, after I showed them once how to put them in correctly, to go back and spend the $77 for the 14-man hole.
Can we maybe try to address that together with S.H.I.? Like, I have no problem getting on the phone with them.
I have no problem with them, Jimmy and I were supposed to have a meeting with, to them in the next very upcoming weeks, so maybe let us talk to them and see what they say, and then we'll get.
I think we might be able to address that.
I hope so.
And if I'm wrong, and I'll, I'll, I'd gladly say that I'm wrong, but I don't know if we need it in here, if we can get it done.
But let Jimmy and I get up with them, and maybe we can, and maybe, Mary, we'll listen, we can get something, hash out with them instead of trying to bring other people in, do it, go from there.
Can you just follow up with us and let us know? Thank you. Good point. Any other additions as it relates to state roads? These are state roads.
I'm very happy to see the sidewalks, and that's something that, that's something I wanted to just throw out to the group was, and if you say it's not a ranking, then I'm okay with that. The pedestrian bridges, obviously, boom, big bucks, um, and I just wanted to make sure that we get these, they, they get the attention that are further down the line, sidewalks on Old Ocean City Boulevard on both sides of Main are a concern.
And chances are, we're going to be targeting, just so you know, for pedestrian bridge, we're going to be probably targeting more of the bipartisan infrastructure funding, we're going to be probably targeting more of like what we did last year, congressional directed spending requests, so, uh, whether we'll have success with that or not, it's, it's a project that we need, but it is a bigger ticket project, so, um, but no, I, I don't ever get the sense, and nothing has ever indicated to me that these are in ranking order.
I was just thinking, maybe that would be enough.
No, it's not, I, I don't get that sense, and we, I've had a pretty good conversation with State Highway before their little changeover, and they were very apt to want to do the sidewalks and things of that nature and crosswalks, so I'm hoping with this changeover that we can get those projects on the forefront.
I see you added the accident, which is great.
Yeah, I mean, those are big things. Now, I didn't put in there the fact that we have one at the other intersection, I might add that, but, um, thanks for bringing that up. All right. Okay, so, uh, nothing else related to A R B on agenda item number eight, let's move to agenda item number nine, which is the Town Administrator's Report.
We don't have a whole lot this evening, uh, we have, well, I won't steal Kelsey's thunder, I'm sure she's going to talk more about the, um, wage study, um, shoot, there was something that came into my head, just went out that quickly, if I think of it, I'll bring it up.
You can talk about the wage study.
I have this for this, this week, on Thursday or Friday, um, separate groups for department heads, supervisors and superintendents, and then employees. All employees have been strongly, strongly encouraged to attend, um, you know, that due to a number of factors, some may not be able to attend, but we also scheduled an evening virtual session, um, for those who can't be here during the day. They're moving right along, they're, they're receiving good response to the surveys they sent out to other towns, uh, which is an undertaking for, for a town to respond to them, so it's something that, uh, we're, we're thanking all of our colleagues out there for taking on, and the only other thing is I will be out of the office next week.
Thank you. Any questions for our Town Administrator? All right, up next are departmental reports, and we'll start with our Planning Director, David.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you saw in the weekly report, um, among the permits we issued was for the entrance to be redone of the Dunkin' Donuts at Food Lion Plaza. Finally, the State Highway and the contractor got together and we issued a gradient excavation permit on, I think they picked it up Thursday, so you'll see work going there, that's always been, uh, we've heard that topic come up about everybody in the morning getting their coffee, uh, while the school buses and all the, uh, people are going to the hospital for work and how it jams up William Street, so, uh, the, the solution was they've added an extra lane, they had to make it a little wider for the entrance and get State Highway's okay on that, um, since William Street is a state highway, um, so they'll have a double stacking lane, uh, it should alleviate a lot of the people hanging out waiting to make a right in to get their coffee on William Street in the morning, so I thought that was an important one. We had, uh, one new single-family, uh, home permitted, and that's, uh, uh, next to the park on Flower Street, where you saw that one home get demolished, so now they've been issued a permit for a new home, that construction should start anytime now, um, which I think is a good addition for that area. The Board of Zoning Appeals met last week on Wednesday, and they gave a special exception for the new building, uh, 19 Gay Street, for a parking, a size of the parking, uh, reduction of, the parking spots will be 18 feet long instead of 20, but that building still hasn't been approved, the, the Wednesday before, uh, the Historic District Commission, um, tabled that, they continued that case for some changes to be made at 19 Gay Street. And you may have seen in the news, we had some hullabaloo about the, the globe and some unauthorized, you know, unapproved construction that happened to, at the tiki bar in the rear, so we're, we're trying to resolve that. I believe the, the motion was passed, I know the motion was passed, for them to remove the latest, uh, construction there, and the late this afternoon, I was told by owners' representatives that that'll begin tomorrow, so we'll see. Uh, also on the short-term rental licenses, um, we received, uh, 14 different applications over time, only eight of them were applicable to the ordinance, uh, either, either they weren't, um, the six that weren't either weren't, um, owner occupied in the R1 or the R2, or they weren't, uh, there was various reasons they wouldn't be permitted. We've completed all the inspections except two, have one tomorrow and one Friday to do with MDIA or inspectors, uh, and then I should be issuing licenses hopefully by the end of the week. We have one or two that had paid the fee in full, and the other ones would be paying the fees when they pick up the licenses, so we're awful close there.
Thank you. Any questions for our Planning Director?
Just on the tiki times, Dave.
Yeah.
So there's, uh, 10, you know, obviously 10 business days or 10 calendar days, but, have any fines been issued on that?
No. If it's 10, I've given them the benefit of the doubt, because our, the ordinance doesn't say calendar days or business days, it says it within 10 days. So, um, business days is Wednesday, this Wednesday, the, uh, the 15th, uh, calendar days would have been, um, Friday, so, you know, I've tried to keep, keep in touch with Matt Barrier, who represents them, or did represent them in front of the Historic Commission, so, uh, I told him today, I said, unless I know what, what you're going to do, the fines will start immediately, and it, and the, the Historic Commission, the Historic Chapter, Chapter 104 Historic Preservation says, the fine can be not less than 25 nor more than 400, so they want, in the motion, they asked for 400, so, because they, uh, they wanted to let them know how seriously they took it, and, and that this is, uh, you know, not to be tolerated, so, uh, we'll see what they do tomorrow, and, and, you know, if they want to come back with, with plans, all, all I've ever asked is that they, they, even with other dealings, just come to me and talk to me, and we'll figure out the, the path that makes you meet the code and makes you happy, and it's a job you can do, I, you know, we're not here to be the, uh, the, the no department, that's not my function, you know, my function is to make, make it go smoothly for both parties, for the town to be within code, and for the property owners to, to do it correctly and safely, because it's, it's all a matter of public safety when it comes down to it, so, thank you.
David, have you received any plans for the new brewery on Harrison and Berlin, the old Southern State Building?
No plans received yet, and we've had a couple meetings, I, I actually met with the new owners of the building, um, I'm going to say five weeks ago, four or five weeks ago, but probably right after the holidays, and, um, they, you know, they had a lot of questions, so, um, uh, I had the fire marshal meet us there, Matt Owens, the county fire marshal, so he could say, well, if you're doing this, then you need, you're going to need this, you know, whether it's sprinklered or, um, the kitchen area with its insole system that's over the hood would be enough, um, so we went through all that, I've talked to, their contractor, but I haven't seen any plans for it, no, and they have not gone to the Planning Commission, because if they're going to make changes to the, anything on, on the footprint, on the parcel, they need to go to the Planning Commission for site plan approval, and from my knowledge, they're going to have some outdoor area, I don't know if you'd call it a beer garden, or just a picnic area, or, or, or whatever the enclosures are, but there was talk of extending a deck off the back that goes down to the rear, uh, towards Baker Street, um, and that, of course, would be site plan approval, and, uh, but as far as I know, they weren't going to add onto the building, but now I hear they may need to, to do brewery operations, because, uh, the, the vats, if you want to call them that, that would hold the beer, you can imagine the weight of them filled with, uh, with liquid. with liquid and, you know, during the process. And whether that, the framing that's there, the floor joist system, the support system could hold that, you know. So I don't know. I think there's a lot more to work on. We don't know that, but I haven't seen any submittals yet, no.
David, I just have a quick question. I don't want to put you on the spot. So for planning and historic commissions.
Planning and?
The Planning Commission and Historic District Commission.
Yes, sir.
Do they have, are there any written guidelines? Like, if I were to build something and I wanted to follow code and follow spec and make by the rules and everything, but nothing with, would there be something that I could pick up from your office and have that? Like, we're not, the town, I'm just making this up, the town of Berlin does not allow yellow bricks in the Historic District. Okay, so I have to use red bricks. Like, is there anything that's that, not quite that detailed, but is there guidelines that that a builder or designer could have to keep in mind when they prepare their drawings to go before the Historic?
You mean like design guidelines?
That sounds about good, yeah.
We worked on that with the Planning Commission for several years. We don't actually have a document, but that has yet to be completed. But there were, we did, we bridged off of Worcester County Design Guidelines and edited heavily on what didn't apply to Berlin that we didn't think. But the Planning Commission does, they wouldn't, I don't have a document to refer you to if you were the developer today, no. But the Planning Commission has always done that, you know, as far as, if you brought in, I'll give you an example since you use brick. Stack stone, you see a lot of that on, like, let's say modular homes or new construction these days. There is no stacked stone in our area of Del Marva. That's a Pennsylvania, you know, northeast stone that would be pulled out of the river or out of the ground. So traditionally, we're, that's why we have red brick because it's made from clay out of the streams and out of the rivers around on the Del Marva Peninsula. So they want to see brick. That's one of the reasons we have a lot of brick all around, not just in Berlin. So they would, that was what they wanted to see. They wanted to see brick foundations. They didn't specify a color. And as far as, they simplified it, but a lot of the roof lines and the circulation where parking should be in the rear, all of the elevations of a building should be attractive, not the back is just an overhead door if it's commercial or, you know, one solid steel door. They should have, you know, different openings to match the rest of the building. They went, we did a lot of work on it over a couple of years. We just don't have the document done.
Gotcha.
And that, no, I will say, that's, that's a casualty of what we have going on in our department with only Carolyn and I. I'm not a desktop publisher. We've gotten close to completing it. We did a lot of edits. The one intern I had the one year did did some work on it for me, which really, it was two summers ago, amounted to a lot of typing for him. He did some sections for me, did them over, but we do need to complete it.
Okay, thank you.
But that, I'd like to complete it. So we could just, in the code, it wouldn't be code, we're not adding that to the code. It would be to probably add it to the Planning Commission for Site Plan Approval. You'd say developer, you know, item fifteen, I'm guessing, I don't know what it is. Refer to Design Standards Guideline from June 2023. Okay, and have a link to it. It could be added to the Town Standards Link where we tell everybody what the construction of the road should be, the thickness and how it's constructed, or what what Jamie's water meter pit should be, just like that. It could be accompanied in the Town Standards.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the Planning Director? All right. Up next is our Electric Utilities Director, Tim Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On Ocean City Boulevard, we installed a new commercial service. Sunset Lakes, we installed a new residential service there. North Main Street, some of you may have seen the new electric pedestal still to the right of Sterling Tavern. There used to be an old board there that looked really pretty nasty. If you haven't got a chance, go out there and take a look at it. I think it looks really nice now. It's a permanent solution. And it can actually be painted any color you want it to be or, you know, to fit into the downtown area. Pinnell Crossing North, we installed a new transformer and we energized twelve new townhomes. Comber Street Parking Lot, I don't want to say too much about that because that's Jimmy's project over there, but we've been doing some prep work for the EV charging station to go in. And then also at the DPL tie point, which is on the backside of Schofield Street Substation, we're doing some tree trimming. That's my report.
Thank you. Any, sorry, I dropped a little. Any questions for our Electric Utility Director? All right. Up next, our Chief, please.
Good evening, everyone. As my report was written, I've been working on mental health in various ways. We're looking at getting one of our officers next month or the next couple of months into crisis intervention training as an officer. And we've been working with the Berlin Mental Health, Behavior Health Group over AGH reviewing successes and different things. So we've definitely been looking at that. In the last week, we've actually had grant opportunities. One of them's in reference to body cameras, and we're looking at the possibility of having the software as one camera's turned on, all of the cameras around would actually be turned on. We're looking at holsters that actually activate whenever drawn, meaning the taser or the handgun. So we might have a match with that. We have a quick timeline, so we're looking at that. And some PAC money, which is Police Accountability Grant, they have additional grant because money wasn't spent in the last round. So in the next two months, we have to have a program that will be able to spend that money. And we're looking at possibly having some complaint software, which is mandated by by the state, that would actually track all complaints and assist us in providing that data. Luckily, we don't have a lot of complaints, but again, it has to be reported in a certain way to the state by law. And we understand that the software is actually being utilized by Ocean City and by the Sheriff's Office. So might be a good thing to follow suit with them.
Chief, we occasionally get sales calls on software like that. Is that only for police or can it be applied to other, to general municipal concerns?
Well, one I have is actually, or what we're looking at is called IA Pro. It's in reference to internal investigations of police, but they actually have different platforms to go ahead and go out to the rest of the different businesses. So again, what it does is take the complaint because it states what it is, but they'll come back and show data that this one officer's had thirteen complaints in the last eighteen months. And it'll provide what we call a blue alert system, that is something going on with that. A lot of times when you have an incident, you're only looking at that incident, and you don't look at the totality. Really, you can't because you don't know all those unless you're collecting that and you have a program that really shows it to you.
So it's really your work to police accountability?
But they actually have, again, a lot of.
Should be a funding source.
Chief, does the reporting of that stay with the officer or with the jurisdiction? So you mentioned that Ocean City and the Sheriff's Office use it. If we began to integrate, an officer came here or an officer went there, would that profile stay with the officer or stay with the department?
Well, again, we're dumping things to the state, but the one big thing is on the commission, Chief Duncan and myself, we're actually looking at the agencies being obligated, we use that word, to provide any discipline records of an individual when he leaves one department going to another. Right now, there's no obligation. And in the world of HR, a lot of entities go ahead and say, all we can give you is the information that we're hired on this date and they lack on this date. We're going to go ahead and push it out. Law enforcement entities don't have that option. You have to go ahead and other state or have some type of summary. For us as chiefs, we don't want to go ahead and take a bad apple from another agency. And again, we want all of the information to go ahead and make the best informed judgment when we hire someone. So again, we all would love to go ahead and make sure that bad police officers are our police officers.
Chief, what is your process currently for receiving a complaint? Does someone come in, fill out a form? What do they do?
Well, we're graduating because by law, we have to go ahead and have multiple systems. So individuals will be able to go ahead and send it directly to the PAB. They can go ahead and they're send it by phone, email. They don't have to be in person.
That's a common.
So that was the barrier. Before, it was that you had to do in person. You had to go ahead and sign your complaints. And with that, if you didn't tell the truth, well, certain things would happen. So again, with any external complaints, they have to go to the newly formed Police Accountability Board, and it has to be tracked by them also, and it has to go before a review. And again, internal complaints, someone being late on shift, those sort of things really stay inside of the house. But anything from the public is supposed to go through the new Police Accountability Board, and we have a great relationship with the county. Rosska does, he's done a wonderful job, and the staff there performing that board.
Thank you. Any additional questions for our Chief, please?
So, 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 so what should we do as the complainer comes?
Again, a full investigation is going to be done. More so is the actual complaint because one thing we know, somebody could actually have a bad history and actually have a legitimate complaint. So again, the investigation really, it looks at those situations more so. If you have someone who actually has access to grind against police officers, you see a pattern, that would be something that would be discovered or hopefully recorded in the investigation itself.
I just have one more thing. You mentioned holster trigger or holster. I don't understand what that is.
What happens right now is when a person pulls the taser, if you hit the radio, I mean, the camera, you would never know that it was pulled. This will go ahead, especially because it's a fast situation, allow the officer to go ahead and draw whatever weapon that they need to, a taser, handgun, and again, not have to worry about the camera. And a camera will be able to capture everything because it actually comes on automatic. Again, when you have those type of systems, the mayor could have a camera on and someone else comes in, and those cameras will automatically come on without anybody hitting them.
So you get multiple.
Views, which again, one camera doesn't see everything, and we've learned that.
Interesting.
But in the case where, where a phaser gets knocked wrong, the camera is, is turned on manually?
Correct. Some other systems I'll turn on if you have their hit, announcing the lights and a patrol car and those sort of things.
Thank you. Any additional questions for our Chief, please? And the report from our Town Attorney, David Gassman?
Not tonight.
Finance Director Natalie Sledge?
We have the file, the capital projects of fiscal twenty-four, working on the line items for General Fund. We're going to be reviewing that March the first, and then we'll be working on the utility funds, so we'll be reviewing those on March the fifth. Processed the ten ninety-nines for the calendar year 2022. We've reviewed monthly voices for DBF and EA, processed large amounts with the smart metering for the work fund. But working on budget basically and moving forward with filed all the goals and accomplishments forwarded to Mayor and Mayor. The check process and the credit card payments been forwarded to there, I believe a couple days ago as well. And just regular routine stuff, little bill processor. We have more people sending out for line payments and online billing, which is a good thing. And working with the police associates on the electric grid study.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director? All right. Up next is our Water Resources Director, Jamie Lashman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the last couple of weeks, we've red meters and did our rereads. We ended up having to install and do water service on South Main Street. The State Highway wasn't happy with it, but they didn't have much choice. Met with them on a couple of other projects in town. We had five employees attend the First Amendment training through Worcester County, through Legit. I think we're going to try to send most of my department through just because we're out in the public a lot, just in case. We had a lift station lose power at three forty-six. It would not transfer back to the regular power. Come to find out, the transfer switch had a control board go up, so we had that replaced. At the treatment plant, we had on our SBR, which is our main treatment, we have a discharge valve that failed. The only way to operate it is by hand right now. The parts have been ordered in, I think we ordered them December, but they're like twenty weeks out, so we're having to operate the valve manually until the new one arrives. So hopefully it'll speed up a little bit, but that's a way it seems to think they're going twenty weeks to five months. DBF sent us some stuff that was fifteen months out for parts for development. So had a breaker keep tripping on one of our digestors, come to find out the cable was, had a chafe into it, so we had that replaced. William Street, no update. I mean, we're just waiting on the lift station to get here. A lot of the materials here at Tim's Yard, just because they, they had it sitting there so that they could get partial payment for it. We've had a little bit of communication on Broad Street about the power with Tim. DBF has, they're getting that finalized up so they can get Tim to load later so he can order his transformers and whatever he needs. The meter replacement project, we received probably ninety-nine percent of our meters. We're waiting on a few more, but it's not going to hold us up for more, get ready to start, go out for bid. We're still working out some details on our end for GIS locating, so that way when we have a water leak or something, we can pinpoint the meters a lot quicker. And for the lead copper new rule coming up for 2024, this will start our inventory of what's on our side and what's on the customer's side. We will not be able to probably dig up a lot of them because if you notice, a lot of them are in sidewalks or people's driveways, but we would like to try to hit as many as we can. And the wells, we've, we've finished the pH system upgrade in well two and well three. Everything seems to be smooth, running smoothly. I was called today by Schultz, and they're going to, we're going to be running well three and two tomorrow during our annual, our yearly test. So they'll be out in March, so you might see some water running down the road from Franklin. And hopefully within the next week, we can get well one to inspect the casing before we move much further on the new building for there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our Water Resources Director, Jamie Lashman?
Jamie, I just have a quick question on the First Amendment audit trading you talked about. Is that where if someone's out, you're out doing a project and someone's there filming you, you just let them be?
Yes.
You're better to ask.
Kelsey's, she forwarded us the email from Worcester County, but I just, you know, because we're out in the field so much, I've been just having our people like trying to send, I went to one in Ocean City, and then when they had, Worcester County had one two weeks ago, so we said, a couple people that, well, five people that weren't, you know, they had some time to go down there to get it done. And everybody came back and really thought it was a good learning experience. So I felt comfortable with, I felt good learning it, and I felt they, I had a good feedback from them. And, you know, it's free, it's an hour of your time or the town's time and send them either to Snow Hill or Ocean City. So I figured the next go around, I'll probably try to send a couple more so that way everybody in our department has the training through Legit.
We did have Officer, Lieutenant Lawson, he did an internal training for our staff probably in December or so. And then Legit just did one in Ocean City, then Worcester County. So I may have Legit come out here at some point, but I'm giving them a break from the Eastern Shore for a month or two, let them, let them go some other places. But, but I think we'll probably ask. probably ask them to come here. But yes, that's exactly what it is.
I'm sure it's great training. Have you ever had an incident or something?
No, we have not, but when we attended the Maryland Clerks meeting, there was, there were only like 20 municipalities in attendance and at least, I want to say like 13 or so have had that occur in their municipality. So some of them were trained and knew what to do and others were not.
And generally, it's the same person?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple, yeah. And there's, there's a couple, I'm not gonna name names, just a couple larger ones that have been coming, yeah, down from other states and stuff that, that have been showing up in Maryland now, so.
And it does potentially open the town up for some liability, which is why Kelsey, Mary and our staff have been proactive on doing the training and staying up on the stuff that's taking place and as well as making the changes that we believe.
Yeah, we're gonna do additional signage at the facilities, all of our town facilities, including fences, saying, you know, only authorized personnel being on this point because you are allowed to do that. So if there's signage, they're not supposed to enter the facility, so.
And the whole premise is that they, the folks that are doing this believe that public space should be, even if it's not public space, should be open access. So they're, yeah, they're, they're taking it a leap too far.
Well, especially at the, like utilities and stuff. I mean, it's more of a safety concern. We don't want someone coming into that area and falling in a tank or something, you know? So it's, it's kind of doubling, you know, the signage, that signage is gonna have double meaning there, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for our water resources director? Up next is our Public Works Director Jamie Charlie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Crew's been down filling potholes and shoulders and checking with shoulders with millings and stuff, just going around all the streets in town, working on that. We had a couple vehicles hit some signposts and last couple of weeks, we replaced a couple The concrete work is done on Commerce Street. We'll be adding more dirt in there. Come closer to spring and planning when that, when the weather breaks and the temperature's ready to be planted. Space water and public works had a safety coordinator instructor come in and he talked about Usher regulations and hazardous materials and how to storage and storage chemicals and everything, what were storage areas and also talked about safety entering up and down trucks, three-point contacts and working with ladders and all. Very good classroom work for the departments. And then trash service has been going smoothly and I like to praise all the employees down in public works because it's been going smoothly because of the job that they're doing. They're hitting all the cans and we get calls, we go back out, even though it's inconvenient, but we do what we can to stay with that customer service in our community. It's all right.
Thank you. Can you just clarify, it's not our vehicles hitting the signs, it's other vehicles hitting the signs.
Oh, yeah, it was some drivers that are...
Just to make sure it's accurately covered.
We didn't hit their sign, we were repairing it.
Other people have hit it.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for our Public Works Director?
I don't know if this is a question for you or the chief. Who cleans up, who cleans the road after accidents?
The tow company is supposed to clean the roads.
Well, the tow company that, that, that Daxton on Flower Street, that's, that is, that is, that is a real poor job. And I, somebody needs to call those people because it is still glass everywhere on Flower Street.
We'll talk to Jamie to see if he can help there, but we'll let them know they might not be on the list.
Yeah. It's a real poor job.
Thank you. Any additional questions for our Public Works Director? All right, thank you. Up next is our Human Resources Director Kelsey Johnson.
Well, keep it brief. I'm working on the FY24 personnel budget. I'll be meeting with Natalie on the 24th to input those numbers into Tyler for you guys to, you know, incorporate into the budget. Met with Chris Carroll today, Mary met with us as well for the healthcare pre-renewal meeting. We are gonna meet again on March 10th and at that point, they're gonna put us out to bid, so we'll see. But I asked him if, I said, we're expecting an increase, I'm sure, and he did a kind of evil laugh, so I think.
Laughed like it was the silliest fucking laugh ever.
Yeah, I was like, all right. Just keep that in mind. But other than that, I just want to say, we are hiring and we now have a really nice retirement plan for our place department, so thank you all. Yeah, yes, but you can come now, we'll make sure you got it. But yeah, so thank you guys. I think our officers are very deserving of that and it's long overdue, so great job.
Thank you. And thank you for all your work on it as well, Chief Samuel. Any questions for our Human Resources Director? All right, up next is our Administrator's Assistant Kate Dogg.
I did just want to mention during this V-Cow presentation, there were a number of slides, including the PowerPoint that they sent over this afternoon, that were not clicked through. So it would be helpful, I can forward that tomorrow morning.
Yes.
We'll be back. That's part of it.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate? It's her favorite part of the report.
She's right there.
All right, thank you, Kate. Up next, your comments from the council, we'll start with Vice President Brown.
I just have one issue. Parking downtown.
That's a big issue. Unpack that.
It's bigger than 18 inches, isn't it?
Especially parking for those, those service type establishments. I'm talking about the bank. I'm talking about doctor's offices. I'm talking about Worcester, Worcester, yep. Would it be possible for the town to assign or reserve parking spaces for a certain amount of time to be utilized for, for those folks that have to come downtown and do banking or go to the dentist's office or go to family counseling and things of this nature? It is, it is so inconvenient and almost impossible for an elderly person to come downtown and find a parking place that will allow them access close enough just to go to the bank.
Safely, exactly.
It is just overwhelming. My, my neighbor is an elderly lady and she has three children that has to go to the dentist. And, and she said, as far as a way she had to park, she actually had to let those children go into the dentist by themselves until she rode around, tried to find a parking place close enough for her to enter the building. If at all possible, I think it would be really a good thing to do to try to assist folks that, especially the elderly, that, that have to go to the bank in those service type establishments. I'm not talking about retail. I'm not talking about retail none whatsoever, but those type of things.
We'll have to look into maybe the best way to address it because I think it'd be hard to differentiate where folks are going, but maybe we'll take a look.
I would think that the answer for Main Street would probably be no, because it's a state highway, it would be their, their rules, their decision. As to the side streets, I don't know. We can look into it.
I would appreciate it very much.
Maybe, we talked about adding potentially a handicap spot to that area, maybe we add one and see how it works. And if it's utilized, maybe we can look at exploring some more, but.
Yeah, because Commerce Street, as far as the dentist office, I mean, it's not right in front of, but as far as the dentist office goes and the bank, that's not too far.
Maybe, I mean, we had talked about whether or not to add some handicap spaces to Commerce Street. Maybe we'll look at adding one space and see how it goes.
How it moves around now.
I mean, at least then, when you let the children out, you just go around.
Right back around.
There's a willer delay.
You sound like a guy.
I think that might be banned.
I know, that word is...
That's all I... I think, hold on, what is it? It's traffic or something.
Communication.
Traffic communication. Well, I would think, and I, and I hope that when the new projects come, when you have apartments and have no parking, that we have that addressed. When you look at Commerce Street, you have individuals that live in the building and park there and the cars are gonna be there all day. We just got finished at Commerce Street and they're removing a couple parking spaces. So when you do those things and you have businesses and the owners park right by their own business for a long period of time, those are the things you have. Again, the bank has no parking. We'll take it back. The bank has a lot of parking.
Yeah.
In fact, it's in front of burrages and they allow other people to park there. Their employees park way over there, their employees are not right there, but for the flow of traffic, they don't have anything close by. And the only places we have control is the few places, Commerce Street there and the post office, which is our parking lot. So again, parking's a premium. And whenever you put a, put a business that has various for parking.
Special exceptions.
Then you have trouble.
Yeah.
And we either have restaurants getting built with no parking spaces, you know, that used to be hardware stores and those sorts of things.
All right, Councilmember Durk. Nothing to report. Councilmember Nichols?
Today was a good day. The absolute great and Kila, those two things were a long time coming. So it was very, it was very nice to see both of them happy in conjunction with one another. So kudos to the town of Berlin. Congratulations, Chief. Tim, good job, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris?
I don't have anything, Scott.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to tack on one of the props. I talked to a family that, you know, last summer, they were victims of an armed home invasion and, you know, it was one of the, it was a talking point and she just wanted to make sure that everything was gonna go as, as it seemed. And, you know, I think we all know about that family, that rattled, that rattled us all, I think. And my credit card bill went up with new home security cameras and those sorts of things. So proud of us, it wasn't that, but, so I'm proud of us for that. It was a, we've all talked about it enough, but it's a monumental moment.
Thank you. All right, comments from the mayor? I have only one. The, and this is on behalf of all of us and, and the mayor's office. Each year, the Berlin Fire Company reaches out for requests for service citations and we provided those this year for their annual banquet that was held on Saturday. And I just want to thank the following members for their volunteerism and service to our community. And these are the 20-year recipients and that was Rona Schnick, Ryan Schnick and Adam Tenell. And then there were two for 30-year accomplishments and that was Bill Tillman and Craig Hastings. And then there was one for 35 years and that's Ron Ekman. And then there's one for 40 years and that's Phil Simpson. I think all of us can agree that we thank them for their service. We thank everybody that volunteers at the Berlin Fire Company for their service. And we provided those citations and we just wanted to give them an accolade here this evening as well. That concludes my report. And from there, we'll go for any comments from the public.
Ah, yes.
Mayor, have us...
Yes, please, just name and street name.
Westminster Drive. Just a couple of things. The committees that, like are veteran town, do they report to any council members or anything, or does anybody kind of track what goes on in this committee?
So each board, commission and committee has a staff liaison that's assigned. And that staff liaison helps with administrative duties, helps compile minutes or report out those minutes as necessary. Those are all published and each, so say a board or commission or committee meets, if they produce minutes, the very next meeting packet would have a summary of all those minutes to be able, to be approved, similar to the way that we do things. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, but there isn't like a council member that would be in charge of, let's say, like beautification committee or anything on the board?
No, so a lot of the, like boards, right, their, their scope is framed out in the town code and charter. And then when you get down to like committees and things of that nature, sometimes they're formed, like if we ever start a committee here, right, it's always formed with a document that says it has this many members, they report to these folks. Advisory committees, like say the beautification, right, they can do certain things, but if they need something done that's requiring funds or approval of something, then they have to come here and ask. And commissions and things of that nature or boards may make a recommendation sometimes, which then funnels to the mayor and council.
And just, I guess, I guess this, you, Dave, following up on what you said about that thing that was in the paper, that we were, you know, with Tiki Tim's. Who? Who, okay, I love the next couple of things I'm gonna say, okay, like Hops Pizza and the Commons, like they're right there in the historic district, but there's nothing historic working about those buildings or that place. Are there, are there certain guidelines that everybody has to follow or how does...
Yeah, we have a chapter on historic preservation, but the language is not specific. It's more that they should be complementary to the surrounding area structures. Like if you look at Main Street, mixed in with truly historic buildings, we have some homes that were built in the 1960s or the 1970s, right? So, but they're complementary. They're not, they're not wild glass, modern boxes, let's say, right? So, but that again, is all in someone's interpretation, you know? You know, we have, so it's supposed to be complementary. And I, what I always say is, not everything, it's, it's not like Disney World or Magic Kingdom where everything's matchy-matchy. It doesn't have to be. And it's not written that way. So it's, there's a lot of interpretation for the commission themselves. You know, in looking at that building, some thought it was too modern. And I'd say that would have been a split vote if they had voted it on that night. It would have been, you know, three members to three members if, if they continued it so that that, the architect could maybe give them a few changes that they would, could all agree on.
So basically, I guess it's subjective to someone's personal opinion that's on like either the planning board or the historic, you know, which, okay.
We don't have a color palette like some historic areas, like Williamsburg, Virginia, I'll use them as an example. Because there's only so many colors you could paint trim for your windows in Williamsburg, in their historic area. But we don't have that, that color palette. We don't, we have never gone that far now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, comments from the press? Vice President Brown? You're up.
Move to a jury.
I was like, man, we're not staying.
Call in favor, sorry.